Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If you would stand with me in a salute to our flag and country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you all would remain standing for the right Reverend Katina Richardson. And I would ask that we keep our mayor and his family in our prayers this evening as he faces a critical juncture with his mother-in-law and the first lady.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we come before you with gratitude for the city of Guthrie and all who call it home. As we approach Valentine's Day, remind our community of the kind of love you call us to. A love that is patient and kind, that does not envy or boast, that is not proud or self-seeking. Bless our leaders and the city employees as they work each day to make Guthrie stronger and more compassionate. Please be with our mayor and his family in this time. And Lord, as we gather tonight, bless our thoughts, our words, and our actions. Let us speak with clarity and listen with understanding, always seeking what is best for the people we serve. May the decisions made reflect the enduring qualities of faith, hope, and above all, love, the greatest of these. We ask all of this in your holy name. Amen.
I will call the regular meeting of the City of Guthrie City Council to order. And Ms. Bryan, were there any public that signed up to speak?
I didn't see any.
No, no public? All right. So, under public comments, we had a presentation by Captain John Fairless of the Guthrie Fire Department. Captain?
Counsel, thanks for having me. Captain Fairless with Battalion Two, Green Crew. I wanted to recognize four of our guys for their actions taken on a call back in January. January 6th, we responded to a fire at 1558 Ken Drive. Upon arrival, we found a working fire in the kitchen. Fire and smoke was spreading throughout the house at that time. We set to quickly on the fire and performing an offline victim search. Two of the most important things a fireman could do. We quickly found the fire, started working on knocking that down. At that time, Lieutenant Rupert started a victim search by himself and successfully located a trapped semi-conscious victim in the back bedroom. Assisted by firefighter Nettles, Walker, and Cunningham, victim was removed from harm's way and handed off to crews waiting outside, thereby ensuring victim's safety. The act of rescuing a living fire victim is noted as making a grab in the fire service. Exemplifies the highest standard of dedication tradition of heroism in the fire service. Now, I would like to ask them to join me in front of Castle. Gentlemen, the community of Guthrie and Guthrie Fire Department are grateful for your bravery and commitment to saving lives. Your actions demonstrated exceptional courage and selflessness. These are traits that any firefighter should strive for. To show my appreciation and respect, I'm presenting each of you with a commendation. And for making a grab, I'm awarding each of you with the life-saving citation.
We appreciate it. Item number three on the agenda is the consent docket. I'll note that the consent docket is true and correct as published. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
There's been a motion made. Is there a second?
I'll say.
There's been a motion made by Councilman Bothroyd, seconded by Councilman Williams, and laid upon the table. Is there any discussion? If not, are you ready for the question? Members may cast their votes by electronic device. Please display the board. Having received a majority of those present, elected to and constituting the council, the motion passes. Item number four is items removed with consent agenda. There were none. Item number five is change order number three with GNL Tank Blasting Services to increase the contract by $9,200, Director Maker.
Yes, Counsel, change order three will increase our contract by $9,200. The increase is due to unforeseen repairs found as the contractor started sandblasting and going over the tank. We had found one weld broke on one of our rungs on the ladder. And then also the vent cap was rusted all out around the top where it mounts. So, this would include welding that and installing a new vent cap, 24-inch vent cap at the top of the tower.
So moved.
There's been a motion made by Councilman Bothroyd. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded by Councilwoman Mills and laid upon the table. Is there further discussion? If not, you may cast your vote by electronic device.
All votes are in.
Please display the board. Having received a majority of those present, elected to and constituting the council, the motion carries. Item number six is the acceptance of the Oklahoma Department of Energy Management Grant Award. I believe that has been requested by staff to be pulled from the agenda and will be replaced at the next agenda without objection. That will be ordered. Item number seven is ordinance number 3419, request to close a portion of an alley right-of-way. The 125 portion foot of the alley right-of-way adjacent to lots 1 through 18, block 70 of Capitol Hill within the 300 block of South Pine per the application 24-005, Director Kasich.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. As indicated, this is a request to close an alleyway. As was stated, this is in 300 block of South Pine. All utilities were notified. Cox Communication did have some concern at first because they thought the easement was going to go away. In this case, the right-of-way will be closed and eventually vacated, but the easements that exist within that area will be maintained. So after that, Cox had no further issues. Our Public Works Department did not have any issues, and there was no objections from any of the adjacent property owners. The Planning Commission had recommended 5-0 to close the portion of alleyway.
Is there any questions?
Yeah. Dan, I believe that that portion directly to the west of that is already closed.
That is correct. Yes, and this is an undeveloped alleyway, so there's no physical access at this point. But yes, I forget how many years ago, but the middle part of that alley has been vacated. So there's a portion that still exists to the west, and this is the portion that exists to the east.
Okay, thank you.
What does your request or how does a request like this come forward?
It can come through the city, us if we want, or any property owner that's adjacent to an alleyway or any right-of-way can request closure. And as I indicated, it'll go to the utilities as well as our Public Works Department. And ultimately, if there are no issues, then we usually move forward with closure.
But because it's still an easement, they can't build a fence across?
That's correct. Right, yeah. It'll just become private property versus public right-of-way.
My motion to approve it.
There's been a motion made by Councilman Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
I guess there's a second by Councilman Bothroyd. Motion made and laid upon the table. Is there further discussion? Not? Are you ready for the question? Cast your votes by electronic device.
All votes are in.
Please display the board. Having received a majority of those present, elected to and constituting council, the motion carries. Item number eight, ordinance number 3420, request for a rezone located at 417 Roundhouse Road. This is to rezone from I-1 Industrial to General Agriculture for the property located at 417 Roundhouse Road, which is the north one-half of the northeast, one-fourth of section 17, township 16, north, range two west, generally located along Roundhouse Road, west of Division Street, per the Planning Commission application 24-013. Director Kasich.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. As indicated, a rezone. The property is located adjacent to the west of Mineral Wells Park. It is currently zoned industrial. There is a single-family home on the property as well as an accessory dwelling unit. The current property owner is looking to increase the usage of the property for more ag-related purposes such as livestock and I think some chickens. In the industrial zoning district, that is not an allowed use. Actually, the residential is considered illegal non-conforming use. So by having the rezone, not only would it allow for the agricultural uses that are desired, but it'd also make it to where future residential would be a permitted or allowed use versus illegal non-conforming use. The comprehensive plan does support such land use classification. As you saw from the zoning map, we have a lot of industrial in that area that hopefully over time will turn over to something besides industrial because it's not a very appropriate place in our community for that type of zoning. So with that, the Planning Commission did recommend 5-0 for the rezone request from I-2 to A-1.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the director?
I'm sorry if you already said this. Were there any concerns?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I usually say that. Forgot. No. There were no concerns that were through writing or phone calls, and at the public hearing, there were none.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no further questions, is there a motion?
So moved.
There's been a motion made by Councilwoman Mills. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second made by Councilman Bothroyd. There's a motion made, seconded and laid upon the table. Is there any further discussion? If not, are you ready for the question? I'm going to hold the vote open for one minute. The members may cast their vote by electronic device.
All votes are in.
Please display the board. Having received a majority of those present, elected to and constituting the council, the motion carries. Item number 10, City Managers' Report.
Vice Mayor, you skipped. I'm not.
One more.
Oh, nine. Item nine, sorry. I'm having trouble with my contacts today. I apologize. Request for a special use permit located at 1112 North Wentz. Discussion, consideration, and possible action on a request for a special use permit to allow 150-foot telecommunications tower in A-1 general agricultural zoning for a property located at 1112 North Wentz, per Planning Commission application 24-008. Director Kasich.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The property is the existing or the Missy's property there on North Wentz. There's a proposed tower, as indicated, for 150-foot tall that will be north of the existing building. There's a area there, a vacant area there currently. The tower will have an 1,800-square-foot lease area. When we reviewed the application, there was not any issues with any flight patterns or flight areas to the airport. And all of the requirements such as setbacks and that are being met that are within the code, the fall zone. We have the engineer's letter, all of the information that's necessary. And there were no written objections, nor were there anybody at the public hearing that was objecting, that was an objection to that. So the Planning Commission had recommended 5-0 to recommend approval of the 150-foot telecommunications tower.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the director?
Dan, can you just talk about the fall zone and how we came to that area, that size of an area?
Basically, it's built to, if it does collapse, it will collapse within a certain area in that, and that becomes a setback. So in this case, I think it was a 40-foot area. The engineer, there's an actual licensed engineer that assesses that and submits the letter saying this fall zone is where that tower would fall in the event of a collapse in that. So that's where that came from. Previously, we had a setback requirement that made it nearly impossible to build on these properties because it was the height of the tower plus, I think, another half or that, but it was, you know, around 200 feet and so on. Properties such as this, it was nearly impossible to build a tower. So we had made that change, which has helped drastically because there was another tower that was built by, just north of Tractor Supply, that's under the same provisions.
Thank you.
So moved.
There's been a motion made by Councilman Bothroyd. Is there a second?
I have a question first, please. No complaints by any residents?
No, none. None written, and again, none showed at the public hearing either.
There's been a motion made by Councilman Bothroyd, seconded by Councilman Williams. Is there any further discussion? Not? Are you ready for the question? Members may cast their vote by electronic device.
All votes are in.
Please display the board. Having received a majority of those present, elected to and constituting the council, the motion carries. Item number 10, City Managers' Report.
Yes.
I was eager, I'm sorry.
All right. I'll keep it short so we can continue the continuity of the evening. Vice Mayor and Council, as you saw with the change order on the east side tower, work is progressing. Crews have sandblasted and cleaned the inside of the tank, the tower that you see on the east side there. So, the weather has been nice and has accommodated construction to move forward. We hope to continue to see that. Just as a quick reminder, we continue to watch the water system with that tower being drained, with it being down. We do remind the public that if you are experiencing any issues, to give us a call, let us know so that we can get in front of that and try to correct it if there is an issue. Want to give you a quick update on the zoning code. The committee will meet this week. Made good progress and do anticipate an adoption hearing in April. So, moving right along, Dan and the team, the committee, they've worked really hard to get it to where it is. Appreciate that. You may have noticed several dignitaries have been in town. Lieutenant Governor Pennell has been here with Mayor-elect Rob, and as well as Congresswoman Bice has been in town visiting with Chamber Coffee folks and a few of us here at the city. So, it is a busy legislative season. We are continuing to make contacts and visit with our delegation. Last thing I have for you is City Hall Non-Emergency Services will be closed on Monday, February 17th in honor of President's Day.
Any questions of the city manager? Okay. Request, item number 11, request comments from members of the City Council. Councilwoman Mills?
Yeah, well, since Councilman Taylor's not here, I just wanted to thank our staff. Actually, for my day job at the Capitol, I work with staff in various municipalities across the state. And unfortunately, not all of Oklahoma's cities has the caliber of staff that we have here in Guthrie.
Amen.
So, just wanted to say, because we don't say it often enough, and I mean, like, this is a perfect example tonight with our fire crew, but you guys are doing great work, and I appreciate that. And I know that you guys are high caliber and that we are very blessed here as a city to have you guys. So just want to say thank you for all your hard work. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman Bothroyd?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Williams?
Nothing, thank you, sir.
Councilman Rob, Councilman and Mayor-elect Rob?
Sorry for being tardy today. I had my first street committee meeting a few days ago with Tenny and two other councilmen. I will say, out of all the commissions I've been on, as well as this council for two years and all the meetings that I've been a part of, it was probably the most constructive meeting I've ever had. So, just thought I'd put that out there. Other than that, that's it.
Thank you. I want to take a moment to thank Deputy City Clerk Jesse Bryan for filling in this evening. I know that that means that you have to stay late after hours, and so I appreciate that. I also understand that she is training in case there is an emergency where we have both the deputy city clerk and city clerk absent. So Jessica is here training to learn how to work the enormously sophisticated and advanced electronic voting system that we have here in the great city of Guthrie, Oklahoma. So, I'd also like to acknowledge Justin from the FBO, from the airport. We have had one of the best years at KGOK in terms of fuel sales that we've ever had. And so the economic diversification that that brings to our community is absolutely impressive, and I am very grateful that that's going on. So with that, if there's nothing else, we have item number 12, which is an executive session proposed pursuant to authority.
I have one more thing, Grant, I'm sorry. Remember, we have an election on February 11th for City Council, so for anybody watching, anybody in the room, please remember for Ward 1, please go vote. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Proposed executive session pursuant to Title 25 of the Oklahoma Statute, Section 307, "For the purposes of discussing confidential communication between the city, its attorney, concerning a pending investigation, claim or action against Spirit Wing Aviation Limited, the council having been advised by its attorney that disclosure will seriously impair the ability to proceed or process the claim or conduct a pending investigation, litigation or proceeding in the public interest." Is there a motion to convene an executive session?
So moved.
There's been a motion made by Councilman Bothroyd, seconded by Councilman, Mayor-elect Rob, to convene an executive session pursuant to 25OS, Section 307. Is there any debate? Hearing none. Are you ready for the question? The members may cast their vote by electronic device.
All votes are in.
Please display the board. Having received a majority of those present and constituting and elected to the council, the motion carries. We'll be back in shortly, hopefully. One, one little thing. That was quick, right, Chris?
Very fast, very fast.
Will come out of executive session. Is there a motion to reconvene?
Our motion.
There is a motion made by Councilman, Mayor-elect Ropp. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded by Councilwoman Mills to reconvene the Guthrie City Council. There's no debate? Are you ready for the question? The members may cast their vote by electronic device.
All votes are in.
Please display the board. Having received a majority of those present elected to and constituting the council, the motion carries. We are out of executive session. Item number 14, Spirit Wing Aviation Limited, possible motion, second discussion, and vote to take any action the City Council determines to be appropriate regarding the matter discussed in executive session concerning Spirit Wing Aviation. I will note that there was no action taken, and I believe that the prior motion covers the action that the city needs to proceed, so unless a member wants to make a motion, we don't need one. Hearing no further business before the council, we're adjourned, and I will call to order as chairman, the Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting, February 4th, 2025. The second item on the agenda is the consent agenda as published. Is there a motion to, or is anyone, do you want any items removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through C?
So moved.
There's been a motion made by trustee Mills. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made by trustee Mills, seconded by trustee Ropp. There's no discussion. The members may cast their vote by electronic device.
All votes are in.
Please display the board. Having received a majority of those present elected to and constituting the board, the motion carries. That being the last item on the agenda, or three items removed from the consent agenda, there were none. Item four is adjournment. Without objection, we stand adjourned at 7:12.